Because don't.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of uh the Holiday Island City Council. It's January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance by the United States of America. And so the forward to the sentence. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Dumas here. Councilmember Owen. Not here. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Mayor Keys.
Here.
More councilmembers present, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I'll declare a quorum. Before we move to the agenda, I am to approving the agenda. I'm gonna bring up one or two things here. Lynn did some checking. Um, you know, we rescheduled this meeting. This is recalling this. The rescheduled regular meeting and uh he, you know, checking what the municipal league. Um, the municipal league says that you basically have to do what senior ordinances. And in our ordinance, we say that the meeting, the regular meeting is held on the third Tuesday of each month. It also says that we meet at one-ten Woodsdale Drive in Holiday Island, Arkansas. So that needs to be corrected and we'll do that next month. But um, what this says is that um, if we don't do the regular meeting on the third Tuesday of each month, if we wanna reschedule it, we should call it a special meeting. Uh, or we just cancel it and wait till the following month and have it there on a regular time. So I'm going to um, I guess I wanna change up.
Or we could amend our rules to say we can cancel and hold a regular.
Right, and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna propose that uh we don't worry about it for this meeting, but in the, in the February meeting, I will have, I will bring something to change this ordinance to allow us to reschedule meetings um without calling them special meetings because there's a the issue with a special meeting is, is that you can't modify the agenda. You can only cover items that are on the agenda for the special meeting, so uh it would tie our hands as far as being able to discuss any other issues. Um, so anyway, I just thought I'd bring that there with everybody's attention and basically the same holds true for the planning commission and both of, they're gonna have to look at their rules.
And right now, we don't have them. When do you get them written?
Right. Uh, and then I'm gonna make, I'm gonna jump down to item six-point-five. Um, which is something that we wouldn't ordinarily have to do in a council meeting, but that's the uh electing a replacement for a council member. Since we have two candidates, I asked um our attorney how to deal with that. And he said that you need to go into executive session first. Uh, I didn't think that you, I thought executive sessions were only to consider uh issues relative to employees, but he said appointing office, uh appointing people to offices uh also falls under the executive session. So he said you need to go into executive session first and discuss it and then come out and report to the public what was discussed in the uh executive session. Now, I have a problem with changing the agenda to include an executive session. I don't know if that's legitimate or not. If the posted agenda didn't call for an executive session, I think that it would be probably inappropriate for us to actually go into executive session.
No, you can add or subtract items, but that is something different.
What is that?
I say you can add or subtract items from an agenda, but you think that the executive session would be outside of that realm.
Prevents us.
So, I mean, I, I'm throwing it out there to the, to the council. If, if you think that it's okay for us to go into executive session, even though it wasn't on the agenda, we can modify the agenda accordingly and and uh.
I never. I can't rec- recollect ever, ever doing it.
Well, I would've, I, I would've had this all figured out or fixed before tonight, except I got the call from the attorney at four-thirty. You know, I didn't have any, I didn't have an opportunity to do anything.
So I would say that if something came up during a meeting, it required an executive session.
Executive session.
You can always alter an executive.
Yeah, but that was, you can always adjourn to a.
That would be before an agenda. You can interrupt the agenda and adjourn to an executive session in the middle of the meeting.
Or it's, we're, we're, we're. We're like, well, we can change the agenda.
Right. All right. I move that we uh take six-point-five and make it an executive session, executive session for the replacement of the council member.
Okay.
And move it up then, was it?
Uh, you can have it, you can have it at the same point.
Okay.
Yeah. We can do it in the same place. Okay, so we have that motion to amend the agenda. And well, let me see if there's anything else I need to change or what. I don't think so. Okay, then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll say.
Ken made a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Lynn has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. The agenda as amended is approved. Uh, we distributed a, a minutes of the December nineteenth meeting. So I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Did we approve the agenda yet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're just made of man.
Okay.
We did that.
Well, make a motion to approve the minutes of.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes of point twelve nineteen, twenty-three.
Second.
Lynn seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Right, the minutes are approved. Ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, and memoriam. Anything, announcements? Okay, and I'm going to adjourn this uh council meeting and go into executive session. We can do it in my office, but we'll have to grab three chairs on the way. So I'm going to adjourn. And uh when we get done, this shouldn't take long.
Half hour till it's done.
Okay, I'm pausing the recording. Is she on your own person?
I guess, I guess, I worked on one, I know, it's a booger. If I didn't check, then I go December, he's been fit, I need to go back and replace him.
Carrying my agenda in there.
It's not.
Glasses?
No, I think I left my, I think I carried my agenda.
Questions for our people? Mayor Ken, the mayor of.
Okay, we'll we'll reconvene the regular meeting. Um. Um, and by law and procedure. Uh, I have, I, I report what we have, the outcome of the executive session. Uh, the council decided that even though we have two very qualified candidates, um, both of whom uh we think would do a great job on the council. The council decided that they would nominate one candidate and then vote. So I'll open the floor for nominations.
I move that we nominate Sharon Lawler to replace Ward to position one, council member.
We have a nomination. We have a second?
I'll soon contain.
Ken will second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
All four say aye. So Sharon. Welcome to the.
Was that a vote for the nomination?
Oh, okay.
I moved that the, well, we don't have to move to close the nominations. It's just one. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to. Doing it by Robert's rules of order.
Don't you pick it up on a porch.
Okay.
Quarter. I move, I move we close the nomination.
Okay. Okay, so. Do I have a second?
A second then.
Ten seconds closing the nomination and the session.
Uh, that was by Bart.
Yes.
The motion.
Yes.
Okay, well, we have to vote on the motion to close
Yeah.
the nomination. I think we can do that by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Um, to, now we'll move on to actually voting on that candidate. Uh, we wanna do that by roll call vote. Yeah?
We get prepared here. Okay, councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Abstained.
You abstained?
I am here.
Pat, is that Pat? Is that Pat?
Yes, it is.
He wasn't called in his session.
You weren't involved in the session.
Yeah, you didn't go to the executive.
I didn't go to, I have to abstain. I was not in the meeting.
Okay. Um, councilmember Coon?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Vote is three in favor, one abstention, two abstention.
Three out of five is the majority, so the uh candidate is elected. So congratulations. Uh, at the end of the meeting, we won't hold everybody here for, for that, but at the end of the meeting, I need to swear you in so that everybody can start swearing at you. You have to be sworn in to get sworn at. Okay, then we can do it now. Dang it.
Sharon, Sharon, you can go walk over here at least behind Ken, you can get some camera there. That's fine. Over by the flag maybe.
Raise your right hand. I swear a lot.
I share.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Arkansas.
And the state of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
In charge of duty of the office.
For the city council member for Ward two, position one.
For city council member, position one to position.
One. Upon which I'm about to.
Which I'm about to.
You are newly sworn in. If you will sign this. And you can make a seat for the kids, what you want. All right. I wanna reinforce again that the other candidate, Peggy, is immensely qualified. Uh, does a lot, you know, for the community already and um there'll be opportunities for her to serve with the city uh in, you know, other capacities. So um, okay, moving on to reports, December financial statements.
Ready? Where you gonna start?
Oh, coming down to.
We got the municipal.
Okay, we'll begin with the balance sheet.
The minute?
Uh, at the end
The financial.
Uh, of December. You can see we have um in the general fund, uh two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. In the reserve fund, seventy-five thousand and seventy of that is in a tax specific deposit. And in the street fund, there's four-hundred-and-seventy thousand. And that is in a money market account. All those accounts are in C N O spend. So there was a grand total of seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand. And I talked to the bank this week about our insurance coverage, F D I C coverage, and they assured me that we are covered. Um, normally uh on demand accounts are limited to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And on dining deposits and savings, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we have three-hundred thousand more than the F D I C insurance, but I was assured that um since those are governmental account in Arkansas, we are covered. We're protected. Okay, next. Okay, going a little further. Um, as far as the general fund, uh our receipts were twenty-five thousand six hundred uh in government receipts, um twenty-three thousand of that is county sales tax. Um, and then there's the usual municipal aid, the twenty-four fifty eight. There was nineteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars in uh permit applications for building and a hundred and fifteen would be, can, those would be conditional use, right? Uh, in December, they were just getting started on, and a hundred and eighty for Baghdad. So in December, total receipts were twenty-seven nine twenty-five, bringing us to a total of three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand five uh for the year compared to our budget of three-eighteen. So just a little short of budget. Um, and you go on down, I don't think there is anything too unusual in uh expenses. Um, going down, then we think they're all pretty much the run-of-the-mill monthly expenses in the general funds. And code enforcement, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and compensation for salaries, um bringing a total of fifty-four twenty-six from that year compared to we had budgeted twenty-two thousand. Um, other expenses were forty-two dollars. District court. The only expense there was the prosecuting attorney, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, you know, and we have budgeted nine thousand there, so we're under budget of that. Um, so uh, go back then to the other expenses there. Okay, proceeds, that was for the mailing, I think. We told the senior notice, so.
Well, I think that's about eleven hundred dollars. Let's just show up in uh in uh planning.
Okay.
But no, this is professional, this is, oh, it is.
I think that's the postage and uh five twenty-five is the per.
Oh, okay, right.
I believe it's the way that was.
Okay.
It made thirteen hundred there. Uh, public safety, uh rent was three hundred. Uh, sheriff's contract was ten thousand. That's actually two months because uh I didn't get the October bill paid in November. It was paid in December along with the November bill, so that's two months. And I have not yet received uh bill for December. And I emailed Melissa a week ago. I haven't heard anything back. Um, I could calculate it, Dan, from the evidence report, you know. We just wait for the bill. We're gonna get the invoice and kind of, okay. So, um, the invoice and solid waste, the dumpster fees were a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So if it's going down, then. Yeah.
It looks like we bet shit a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand and spent ninety-two thousand, but we were, but it seems like if it was one fifty-five, it should've been about seventy-five thousand since we were only using one debt.
Well, but the car is included in the contract that they've been so.
It, oh, it's, oh, that was close, huh?
That was fifty-two or fifty-five.
Conscious. So we did, did the car, but we only paid my wrong.
Yeah, which.
Yeah.
I, I have it on my list to call, you know, the county of drugs and talk to them about that. They didn't wanna do it while all the storming was going on. So.
That, that'd be our. Those are the most of time.
Car was supposed to be for the second deputy. They're using it for our first and only deputy.
Yeah.
And um, they're not gonna be in a position to honor the contract, then we need to do something different.
Yeah. Reimburse us for the car. Yeah. Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay, why it's going down, having different toys.
So the dumpster fees turned out to be higher than what we thought.
Well, we gotta figure.
We got a bigger dumpster. I can probably go.
Go back.
I could go back again now, but then I'd have to um rig the new dumpster for the chains and locks. So uh, that's why I haven't done it.
How much difference is it?
Well, but even you see for.
Thirty or forty dollars a month, probably.
Um. Well, if we had a hundred and ninety dollars a month. See, that would be almost, that'd be twenty-two hundred.
I would.
For a year, so.
Think we need to wait and see if we get the trash things first now first because you don't know how many part-time or how many.
How many new Baghdad customers we're gonna get.
And, and, and I think some, I think some of the Airbnb's would might also be candidates to use that.
Yeah, and I'm also using that dumpster for our office trash, so we're using it for that too.
And it may be premature.
Okay, so.
It's not a lot of money, so.
Our total expenses were twenty-three thousand then for December, making a total of two-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, six-fifty-nine. Put the year in, we had budgeted three forty-two.
I.
Now, but of course, you know, the sheriff contract is.
Yeah.
The thing I saw in looking through there, and I thought I saw something, but I didn't see it again when I went back through it, was uh, was the utilities for this office eight hundred dot, eight hundred dollars from you?
That's what it was the last month.
Last one, before the cold.
The next, the next bill's gonna be more, so.
That's awful, aye.
Yeah.
We could, we could have a workshop on uh the insulation problem in here, but David's been working hard on that and we uh since the, during the cold snap, we uh, we found quite a few problems and we fixed some of them, but we haven't fixed all of them yet, but.
Okay, well, we're working at it. I mean, that's just during.
During the cold snap with the heaters, the furnaces on full-time, you couldn't keep this building over fifty-six degrees. And with the, with the fixes that we've done so far with the uh insulation and stuff like that, we could at least hold it at sixty-five when it's in the.
This is not that big a square footage. I mean, it's.
Twenty-eight hundred, twenty-four hundred.
I mean, it's a norm. My house is that big.
Yeah, your house doesn't have a suspended ceiling, not much.
My house has, you got cathedral ceiling. You know?
Yes, we, we.
With good insulation.
We, we uh, we definitely know that we gotta work on it.
I mean, that's the only thing I saw that bothered.
Yeah, well, the next, next one, that's gonna bother you more.
Be a more danger.
So, okay, so anyway, so um for the year, you can see we gained, the income exceeded the expenses by fifty-four thousand, so we ended up with that two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand in general funds.
Yeah, back, back up just a little bit for you to totally bend it through there, yeah. You know, that, the fact that we, we were, we budgeted three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand for expense and we only spent two-hundred-and-sixty thousand isn't necessarily a good thing. We never wanna be over budget, but we thought that we needed three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars worth of stuff being done, and we didn't do it. So we, we way underspent on code enforcement, which uh needs to be addressed this year for, and um, yeah.
Well, the only problem is we're paying the
And we.
The lawyer.
We way underspent on the, on the deputy, so, which we need to address. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that next year, that this year is gonna turn out like that. We'll pay more attention to us spending what we're supposed to be spending.
What, I got one question that, uh, go ahead to the next day. I possess, that's where the question is.
Okay, we got straight fund next. Okay, okay, that's the reserve fund, the seventy-five thousand that we put in there uh at the end of twenty-two, no change during the year, that is still there. Uh, go on down, Lynn, to the street fund.
Let me, let me ask a question here. Does, does anybody care about having the, the journal of all the, the payment journal in the financial statements?
I, I'm seeing it, I'm interested, I don't know, to, to look at. You know, but it wouldn't have to include together, neither.
I think the council should approve that.
You know.
You know, the council should approve the expenditures. So. So, when you take action, you're accepting that. If we don't, otherwise we'd need a finance committee or something to approve.
Okay.
Okay, revenue, um, you can see we, our income for the month was. Seventeen thousand, one eighty-three, now, one thing, and I haven't checked. Uh, you notice property taxes zero. Last year, we had two thousand dollars in December.
There should always be something.
I, yeah, I think that's strange, so, and I haven't called him.
Well, there is another share of property tax up in general fund too.
But that was at the beginning of the year. And that ended, so there's no general fund property tax, which would seem normal because. What we're getting is a share of the county tax for roads, so it should all be street.
There's the earmarked county property tax.
Three mills.
Three mills.
We get it up.
And we get half. Based on Eureka property.
I, all I know.
So they collect any, are you saying?
I was. They didn't, uh, they might have collected and not distributed, I don't know.
I was pressured for the amnesty district for six years, they're almost six years, and, um. We always got reimbursement, not in December.
I'll comment the forty-five thousand, five-ten there, reimbursement, that is. The refund of part of the twenty-two street program that we had. And up until December, I was showing that as a credit to the expense account, and I talked to the. Legislative audit person, and he said, well, normally, if you get the refund in the same year. You offset it against the expense, but if you get the refund the next year. You show it as, as income, so I moved at the income.
Makes sense.
So that basically, I guess that's why we're over budget. Our total receipts were three twenty-seven, seven ninety-three, and we budgeted two eighty-six-five. I think if it wouldn't have been for that forty-five thousand, we would have been about three or four thousand under budget. There.
Still expecting property tax, it didn't come.
Yeah, on property tax.
They're, they're bound to have collected property tax in November and December, because it only came due October thirty-fourth.
Right.
So that's, that's.
Still, yeah.
October fifteenth.
I agree, Linda. And expenses then for the year. Um, our expense was twenty-three thousand, six forty-four in December. That was the payment to the district for our share of the road maintenance, and then there was another. During the year was, there was three hundred and thirty dollars. For bridge inspection, I believe, the state bill is. So, our, um. We took in three twenty-seven, paid out twenty-four approximately, so. We received three hundred and three thousand more than we paid out, because basically. No street construction got done because we didn't get a receive, we were hoping to receive grant money for that.
So can we use that in some fashion to pay for roadwork next year? This year?
Uh, even this year, you know, if we.
Carry forward on the map.
But we're, we're, we're kind of on hold though, waiting for a lawyer opinion on what. You know, how the district and the city should move forward, so. Which I talked to Justin about today, and he said they're still working on it. He's been involved in some other lawsuits, but he's, that's been occupying his time.
I move that we accept the December financials.
Lynn made a motion to accept the December financials, who have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, Linda seconded it, any discussion? Well, in favor, say aye. Moving on to committees, planning commission.
The planning commission, uh, had to cancel its last meeting the last week because of weather concerns. We have eighteen applications to consider at our next, um, meeting on February twenty-first. And I got, well, I got two more today, so, yeah, it's eighteen total. Five of them are carryovers from last week, so we're getting there, I'm getting a lot of calls from people asking for help how to fill it out, so with each call. I learn a little bit more about any deficiencies in our application, so it's been revised almost every day this week, the current version's out there.
Okay.
Timber Rock line that he's getting there is ready, we'll be talking about it Friday.
Excellent, so we'll be getting it done in the next two and a half, three weeks, and it'll be in the March hearing.
All right, uh, next on the list is code enforcement, I sent out, um, Aaron's. Um, report for the month, he spent a lot of time. Um, getting the iWorks software updated with the, with the correct ordinance information. And then coding in and starting to generate the letters, the notifications for. People that we have determined haven't signed up for, um, trash service, but should have. And, uh, Jill and, um, I said I've been working on that and Carroll County Solid Waste. About thirty, I, I didn't get a final count on it, but there's about thirty names, um. By the time we get feedback from all the notifications, that'll probably get whittled down some, because. There's gonna be houses in here that are standing empty, uh, cause, cause they're for sale. Or, uh, maybe they're in a, uh, short-term rental program. We just don't have the information as to who they're using for trash service and stuff like that, so I, I would expect some of these. To drop off of it, but I would guess that probably eighty percent of it is gonna be legitimate that. We're gonna have to get people to get signed up.
Now, this is probably gonna be a never-ending process, so, people moving in and out, so.
Yeah, that's why, we're going by address first, and then, um. If we find an address that has a water meter, that, that's not on the Carroll County, um. List, customer list, then we go to the next step and investigate who lives there, but you're right. It's, uh, it's. It's fluid.
Until you get the, the part-time people all identified, and their D and Bs all identified. It's, it's gonna be a.
I think the important takeaway here for today's meeting is that, um, we're making progress and. Over the next month or two, we should, we should, uh, start to see that list get whittled down.
Yeah, it just.
There, there are other properties on there where, where there's action being taken also to.
What we did is we sent them a letter which should constitute a notice.
Right. Okay, any questions on that? And Aaron does plan on, you know, putting a lot more time in now that the holidays are over and everything. So, moving on to, uh, fire department. Uh, I distributed the reports from, uh, the fire chief. Kind of the, pretty much the same old thing, a lot of EMS calls. There were, there were some actual fires on this time around, and one, two, three, four. Four actual fires that they responded to, five, five fires. Which last month were, were in Danny, so. They've been busy, and I'm sure that during the ICE capade. They were busy.
Just they had to get two ambulances out of the ditch for the same call, and they were very busy.
All right, any questions on the fire department? Then the sheriff's deputy report. For December, hundred and twenty-nine, um, hours. Total, there were some sick days and some days off in there. Not much changing, although I, I do wanna, I guess, say that. Around Christmas time, we had another pretty significant rash of, uh, mail thefts. Mailboxes and, um. Uh, Deputy Bilbo was pretty sure he knew we, what, well, who was doing it. He just couldn't catch him at it, so I haven't talked to him lately to see if, that if it's slowed down. Or if they actually apprehended somebody, but, um. It seems to be one of our bigger problems out here. It was apparently somebody that's permanent resident, residence is up in Missouri. But they hang out at. One of three different places here in Holiday Island. So, that's why we need more deputies. Get our hands or our arms around those problems. Any questions on the deputy report?
Um, yeah, I noticed we're looking at the kinds of calls they had out here. Do you notice there are several animal calls? And I, I know we're not talking about the animal ordinance in this meeting, but are we gonna have a workshop on the animal ordinance?
Yes, when we get to scheduling, we'll.
Cause if you notice there, there are at least two bites, two animal bites. Animal at large calls.
You, you gotta look at December.
Animal cruelty calls. That's for the year. And several animal lost calls.
That's for the whole year.
That's for the whole year, yeah, and those are the only ones that the deputy got involved with, so.
There was three child abuse.
Oh my goodness.
And he's doing his work with, uh, you know, civil process, serving whatever he does, notices, warrants, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would have to say that by and large. The people in Holiday Island are insulated from the problems that are going on, you know, they're, I hear it all the time that. You know, oh, Holiday Island doesn't need more deputies, Holiday Island doesn't need, there's a police department, Holiday Island doesn't need this and. Doesn't need that, and it's only because when you live on the island, you're not impacted by what's going on. You know, in other parts of the, uh, of, of Holiday Islands, or if you're living, you know, in. Well, let me, let me just say that there's certain areas of Holiday Island. That are somewhat insulated from problems going on in other parts of Holiday Island.
Here's another one, Dan, if you notice at the top of this page, six, seven, eight. Noise disturbance, yeah, calls. So, mostly early in the year, isn't that interesting?
Yeah. Well, that's when they ask.
April, May and June.
That's when they get the, whatever they, the pavilion open down there.
Well, I just know the total, it was fourteen hundred or something for the whole year, that's huge.
Fourteen hundred calls.
Fourteen fifty-three events.
Someone got the deputy involved in, yeah.
Well.
Mixed up in April.
Yeah, I did.
Fifty-seven welfare checks too.
Yeah, that, that's not like welfare checks, that's checking to see if Grandma's okay.
Yeah, there's a.
If you, if you combine that with, uh, you know, the, the assistance that the fire department. Provides, it's, it's very obvious that. Okay, going on to old business then. Um, business license ordinance, second reading. We'll entertain a motion that we consider ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-two-zero. Second reading.
I move that we approve ordinance twenty-three, twenty-two-three dash twenty by reading the title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn made the motion, and Barb seconded it, so. By title, ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-two-zero, an ordinance establishing a business license requirement. And a fee and penalty requirement for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, is there any discussion?
I, I just, I just, the schedule. I think, I don't say, I don't. How are we ever going to enforce knowingly we have peders?
It's a farmer's market or something like that.
But, you know, I just was wondering how we're ever enforcing.
Well, the farmer's market under S is a zero P, so. That's just, the idea is to find out who's doing it, so if there's a problem, know who to get ahold of, but there's no P associated with it.
And, and we have events from time to time where, uh, people have had tables where they sold stuff. Uh, not being an official farmer's market, I remember Patriots Day, there were tables up there, people selling stuff on Patriots, they could stand one here. We're also, I, I put in there the license for a fireworks stand, that would be two hundred, because. I'm thinking that's something we really don't wanna encourage out here, because people will buy them and shoot them off out here, and. You know, that can cause fires and stuff like that, so I kinda made that one a little bit, but they're considered pedlar also.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I will wait and see after this, uh, chance.
You know, I was going to, I was going to, uh, I can't make a motion. But I was going to suggest that in the table under E, convenience, variety, chain store. I started going through the list of businesses in Holiday Island, and seeing where they fit on the schedule here. I have a hard time reconciling the difference between, uh, Dollar General and Sunfest. Why Sunfest should pay fifty dollars more when half of the Dollar General, maybe not half. But a good portion of the Dollar General store is groceries.
Yeah.
They're smaller in square footage, I don't know if they're smaller.
You know, I'm guessing that we can change this as time goes on. Like if we get a target after or something.
So it'd be easier if there's something to be changed, it'd be easier to do it now. It's best on third reason, and wait, and then have to.
Yeah, yeah.
It can still, we can still amend that.
It was in them two years.
Yeah, we can still, we can stay the same. Yeah, we can still, we can stay the same.
Yeah, the other, I had one other problem is. You have a restaurant. A big restaurant.
Say it again, Ken.
There's a restaurant more than twenty-six. Yeah, a food director over twenty-six. And what if you got one less than that?
Since there's no P on here, so we're not.
If it's. Item C is. Everything that's not on the list. So.
Yeah, it's fifty dollars, everything that's gone on the list is fifty dollars, so if it's hundred point.
Also the hardware stores won't get back to fifty dollars.
No. Hardware stores on. Yeah, it is, yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, sure, Pat.
Uh, I don't know if Ken's moving around, I missed, we're losing about every fourth word of what, when Ken talks. I'm not sure why, everybody else comes through fine.
But Ken needs to maybe speak a little louder.
And we've got a noisy air control system and we have on the software, it's trying to word out the background noise, so.
Oh, okay.
Take away some of the voices from Ken's voice.
Okay.
We wanna know, Pat.
I don't wanna know anything, I just, just saying, in case anybody's wondering, you're, everybody else seems to come through well, but I can't hear everything you're saying, but that's okay.
I guess you could consider the hardware store chain, not just one, it is a chain being powered.
All right, you think you got it covered this one?
So my question would be, if we wanted to change amendments for a reason. Could we start over with reading one or two?
No.
So, I mean, if, if people wanna ruminate on this for one more month, we can still amend it before the third reading and then approve it as amended again.
Okay.
And, but I, I do have one more question with, with, and I don't know if this needs more clarification, but. Under Y, longer leasing business property, we have per business. Should that be per rental unit?
That was my intent, I, I have a, you think, that's thanks that, but it's like, you know, you've got a building here with four or five things in it. You know, and it's, the property is a single. Unit with multiple spaces.
But I think it, it may read a little bit more, a little better. If we say per rental unit.
For, at least. Per rental.
Everybody, everybody okay with that wording?
Yeah. I move that we amend Y to change the wording to per rental unit.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. We have a motion and a second to amend with.
And that was Ken with seconded it.
Ken seconded it, Lynn made the motion, Ken seconded it. To change item Y to per rental unit. All in favor of that amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All right. Any other discussion on the. On the ordinance before we move to vote? All right, we'll call vote.
Okay, council member Dumis, aye. Council member Elwood.
Aye. Believe it or not.
Every left could make, he says, council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Coon.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Lawler.
Aye.
It is unanimous. On the second reading and the next meeting, we'll take the first, we'll do the third reading. Right, next, um. We, we, I, I don't know who made the mistake, it's not important, but way back when. We, no, gave two resolutions. The same number. Twenty twenty-two, zero, zero, one. We not take care of that. Three. No, I was on number two of all.
Oh, you're up there.
I was in the old business yet. I, I didn't know if I should call this old business because we made the mistake in twenty twenty-two. Or if I should call this new business, so I put it under old business. But back in twenty twenty. On, on resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero, zero, one. We passed an ordinance. To approve a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. If you remember, the lady came here and made a presentation on the plan. And it was a special meeting and we passed a resolution to adopt that plan. And Jill came across this in. Reconciling the paper files with the digital file. And. And we in fact did use that resolution number. Also for a different resolution back then, so. Rather than having two resolutions in the file with the same number. I opted to just. Create a new resolution. Again, approving the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. The plan hasn't changed, all were really, nothing in the content of this resolution is changing other than the number. So I would entertain a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero, zero, three. A resolution to adopt the Carroll County, Arkansas Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I made the motion, we approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero, zero, three.
Second.
Ken made a motion, Lynn seconded it. I guess I can read the resolution then. Whereas at the January fifth, twenty twenty-two special meeting of the Holiday Island City Council, a resolution. Was passed adopting a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. And whereas the resolution was number twenty twenty-two dash zero, zero, one in error, resulting in two revolutions carrying the same number. And whereas all areas within Carroll County are subject to ser- to various hazard, hazardous elements. Uh, natural and man-caused with the potential to cause life, loss of life and property damage. And whereas under the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. A Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA required that all local jurisdictions have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan in place. As a condition to apply for future, future federal mitigation funding and. Whereas Carroll County and its jurisdictions with the assistance, assistance of the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. Have researched and developed a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan attached here too. And whereas by participating in the hazard mitigation program. Carroll County and its jurisdictions are eligible to apply for post-disaster mitigation funds. And whereas the Director of the Office of Emergency Management and his or her designee. Is appointed to assure that the hazard mitigation plan is reviewed at least annually. And completes a mandated review every five years to be submitted to the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management. And the Federal Emergency Management Agency for review and updates. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas. The City of Holiday Island does hereby approve. The renumbering of resolution as well as all of the original content thereof. That the City of Holiday Island hereby again adopts these portions of the Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Relating to and protecting its jurisdictional areas against all hazards as result in the hazard mitigation plan. For the purpose of building a safer community by reducing vulnerability to such events. Is there any further discussion?
Do you have a copy of the plan?
It's on the shelf right on the other side of the door.
Okay, so it'll be. Attached to the file sometime in the file.
I mean, we can.
It's a paper.
It, it's a ring binder this thick with maps the size of this table. And stuff like that, so you're not gonna copy it and physically attach it to this document.
I think.
Then we can't say it's attached to.
I think Linda ought to review that and give us. Some options.
Linda can read it all if she wants to.
Okay.
With that, so I copied that right out of the original.
So let's, let's pick as well. You can read it, Pat.
I wouldn't understand it, so.
Any other discussion? We'll call vote.
Okay, council member Dumis.
Aye.
Council member Elwood.
Aye.
Council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Coon.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Lawler.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the resolution passes. As a side note to this, you know, since it says that it's supposed to be reviewed annually. Um, and in five years, so that's two years out, we need to. Um, officially re. Resubmit our plan to FEMA. During the, um. The, um. Municipal League. Winter Conference last week, I did watch one of the presentations. On emergency response preparedness. And it prompted me to check with the district as to whether or not. Uh, the district has an emergency response plan. Because now that we're a city, we need to be part of that plan and that planning process. And, um. The, uh, the, the fire chief. Did some research. And followed a plan that was done in two thousand and two. And all of the, now, in, in context, it's still okay. But all of the information in it is very outdated. Like virtually nobody that's on there as a contact person still works in that position. And, and stuff like that, so. I, uh, got with the Municipal League. And had them send me a whole bunch of information on emergency management planning along with the Fayetteville. Actual plan, which is going to be a hundred times more than what we need. But he said that that would be a good outline or template to use. And I've gotten with Chief Yates and Larry Stamps. And we're gonna set up a meeting in, um, February. With the city and the district. And the cert team coordinator here in Holiday Island, the emergency response coordinator for the county. Because, uh, emergency response in how, in Arkansas basically is coordinated through the county. And the county has a emergency response coordinator. I have that person's contact information, but we're gonna be doing a lot of work getting that. Emergency response plan up to date because it's always. You know, an hour after a disaster hits that you wish you had a plan. And that everybody knew what the plan was, so this will be, this hazard mitigation is kind of a starting point for. Emergency response planning. You know, because that defines what all your potential hazards are, what do you need to be prepared for? The mitigation plan says, how can you minimize the impact? The preparedness says. If something does happen, how are you gonna react to it, so.
So Dan, uh, the, the current plan that exists in that big book you described. I guess Holiday Island did not participate at all from what you said in the creation of that.
No, we did.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
But you're talking, you're say, it said it was twenty, said it was two thousand.
Two different plans. The hazard mitigation plan and the emergency preparedness plan.
Oh, two different plans, okay.
Two different plans, but they, they go together.
So who participated, did I sit participate in the hazard mitigation plan?
I don't remember, I, I, I think.
Bob Clay or Bill?
Yeah, I, I, it was, it was ninety percent district, but I, but the city. The city knew what was, that, that it was going on.
Okay.
Okay. Now we can move on to new business. State law, ACA fourteen forty-three five oh one says that once a year in January, the city council gets together. And decides that you know what you're doing. Actually, let me read it. Uh, members of the governing body elected free city or town shall annually in January assemble and organize the governing body. Majority of the whole number of members of the governing body constitutes a quorum. Uh, the governing body, it, it goes through a, a whole litany of things that you don't want me to read the whole thing because it's. It's eleven pages long. It, it basically goes over what. Uh, i- if we had an election year, we would have to say that we acknowledge the election, that we agree with the election. We're onboarding the new members. And, um, and then it goes on to. Um, basically itemize all the things that we have quantified in ordinances. There's nothing in here that we don't have covered in an ordinance. So. You know, it, the council. My recommendation is the council make. Make a motion. That we have considered fourteen forty-three, the requirements of fourteen forty-three five oh one. And that we meet the requirements of that section of Arkansas code. If anybody wants to see the actual copy, we did this last year. Well, actually, we didn't do it this way last year. Last January, we actually passed the ordinance that quantified all of this stuff.
So why do we have to do it?
Because the law says annually you have to do it.
Seems like you would do a resolution every year, that would annoy me.
It doesn't say how you have to do it, it just says that you annually, that you, the members of the governing elected body. Each, of each city or town shall annually in January assemble and organize the governing body. In my opinion, all you need to do is say our organizing, our ordinances meet the requirements of this section of Arkansas code.
Do we take a vote on that or some, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure I understand.
I would make, I would make a motion to say that our ordinances organizing how the city does business. Meet the intent of fourteen forty-three five oh one.
So no.
I'll take a second.
All right. Barb made a motion, and Pat seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Linda, you abstaining or did you vote?
I, I voted.
Oh. I, I really don't know what, what the purpose is, but I do know that the Municipal League sends you out a little. Notice every year saying, uh, remember you gotta do this. Okay, next on the list, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero, zero, one. Uh, we have a little bit of a, okay. Uh. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero, zero, one. An ordinance establishing salaries for elected officials and employees and assigning municipal property. To elected officials and employees of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas and declaring an emergency.
I'll move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh, oh, one.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Wes, you wanna read it? I was getting, I was getting tongue-tied reading the last one.
Okay.
Okay.
Did, did we change the date on it? Because mine says twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I changed the dates on all of these.
Oh, okay.
On the version that we'll sign.
Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one. An ordinance establishing salaries for elected officials and employees and assigning municipal property to elected officials and employees of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas a method must be established by which salaries are set by the city of Holiday Island. And whereas employees and elected officials of the city of Holiday Island may from time to time be assigned municipal property for use in the conduct of their job. Now, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that salaries for employees effective one one twenty-four, all city of Holiday Island personnel's sadder salaries, wages shall be fixed by the mayor and presented to the city council as part of the annual budget, which may be amended from time to time. A schedule of current salaries will be kept on file with a recorder treasure and available for public inspection. Salaries of elected officials affecting for the year beginning January one twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-one twenty twenty-four. Mayor, recorder, treasurer, and city council members of the city of Holiday Island will be compensated at the following rates. Mayor, zero dollars and city council members, zero dollars annually. Recorder duration, two thousand five twenty monthly. Planning commission secretary, four hundred dollars monthly. City property, the city department head or supervisor shall be required to get a signed listing of said property from any person provided with or furnished any type of property. The receipt shall be filed in the city office with a recorder dress. In the event of death termination or resignation and age employee or officer has wages accrued, sick time, patient paid leave of absence, or any other sum due in order from the city. The city shall vote by such individual or state administrator or executor of same in writing of the amount owed at San Martin and say request said individual to return any and all property supplied or furnished by the city. If the individual has lost this place or otherwise disposed of said property, the city will be paid in full by the individual as executor or administrator. In the event of the principal property, the city shall receive the depreciated value. The city may withhold from wages accrued, sick time, vacation, paid leave of absence, or other sums held by the city. The value of the property not returned at the time of death termination or resignation. Emergency clause. Be it ordained that since wages must be paid starting in January, that an emergency is declared to exist and that this ordinance shall be effective immediately and enforced upon best best approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date of one twenty-three twenty twenty-four. Pro then his mayor or just Westlake still reported.
Hey, any discussion?
Having read this again and thought about some conditions that, uh, may exist about the law and paying the current uh, secretary of the planning commission. First of all, that position is not an elected position, so we may be in trouble included in elected officials. It's a official that's not even appointed by the, the commissioner of the city council. The planning commission appoints its own officers. So somehow we need to maybe segregate that in this, say it's an allowance or something because it's not a, not an elected position. Actually, it's my book. Well, that's an employee. That's the planning commission secretary is service to the planning commission. And our ordinance, the planning and zoning ordinance, it gives the planning and zoning uh, commission the ability to spend money with the approval of the council. And that comes through the budget that we pass. And one of the expenses would be for the secretary if they wanted to pay it. But the council wants to pay the secretary or just give that money to the planning division to spend as they want. I don't think we made that clear. But the planning commission operates autonomous to the city council, except for the point that you're the governing body. If they don't make impoundal decisions, the planning commission makes recommendations to the city.
Are you saying the planning commission secretary could be in form?
I don't know. Yes, they could be, yes.
Yeah.
When I read the statutes and we put that in there, that's what I understood. You could hire someone to be the planning commission secretary.
In fact, in most big cities, I was, I was sure that it is, sure.
So I'm just concerned that it's here as an elected official, which is not.
So then I was just going to delete that last one. Why do you need to, why is it necessary to have two categories? Does the employee or the elected officials, is there a need for that?
You don't list, you don't list salary for employees.
Right. I would say just remove the secretary plan from the secretary from this. But they have to get paid. There's, the third information completes the payment of the secretary. So you're saying it would be in the, the, uh, resolution.
We don't need to do anything. It's, it's. Yeah, but then. Then the other concern is the current planning commission is also a council member. So there's some legal concerns about some sort of, uh, that suitability for that kind of thing occurring.
So, yeah, there's, I, I ran this by Wes. Wes questioned whether or not we needed to do anything over and above this ordinance. Um, because Lynn is a council member and the planning commission secretary. And, uh, so I, again, I called our lawyer and he got back with me this afternoon. But didn't have a, an answer from him yet. He's having some people look into it. He said, there's no law against it. There's no law against a city council member being on a commission and getting compensated for being on that commission. However, there is something called a doctrine of incompatibility that, um, is based on, uh, Supreme Court rulings, attorney general's opinions and everything, and it's based on old, what do we call it, old English law or something?
Common law.
Common law, yeah. Where, um, a- and they tried to explain, what I read on it, they tried to explain what would be considered incompatible and what would be considered to be okay. And the bottom line was, they said, it's very difficult to decide. And, um, generally speaking, uh, you just don't worry about it until somebody challenges it. Unless it's very obvious, like I'm the mayor and I'm going to appoint myself fire chief and I'm going to pay myself two hundred thousand dollars a year. That would be pretty obvious.
But. Since Lynn is an option member, then he wasn't elected. Now, under that case, I'm elected, not serving as that. But what I thought is I was reading through this and the way the words and whereas and, and the section, maybe it'd be best as Barb has urged to remove it from here and move it to the planning commission and see if they want to reward or honor or pay or whatever, supplement something for the secretary they have. If there's, if there's no law against, not letting that happen, let the planning commission take care of it.
Let the planning commission do it.
Yeah.
It's budgeted, so the planning commission can use it or not use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
All right.
Did you make a motion, Barb, or were we just talking about it?
I said I moved to do strike that line.
I second that motion.
Barb made a motion to strike the line of planning commission secretary, four hundred dollars monthly, and Lynn seconded it. Um, any discussion on that? All in favor of, of striking that, say aye.
Aye.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? Remove to a roll call vote to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero one as amended.
Council member Dumets? Aye. Council member Elwood?
Aye.
Council member Graves?
Aye.
Council member Coon?
Aye.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
Council member Lawler?
Aye.
All in favor here, Ellen?
Okay.
Do we need a motion for emergency?
Oh, emergency clause, yes.
I made the vote, too.
Motion says it.
Pat moved to approve the emergency clause. Do I have a second?
A second, Ted.
Ken seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Council member Dumets?
Aye.
Council member Elwood?
Aye.
Council member Graves?
Aye.
Council member Coon?
Aye.
Council member Mills?
Aye.
Council member Lawler?
Aye.
All in favor, Ellen? Okay. The ordinance passes. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two. Approving Carol County Solid Waste Collection Rates for twenty twenty-four, first reading. I have a motion to approve twenty twenty-four oh oh two on its third reading.
Make a motion if you want.
For a second?
I'll say it.
Ken made a motion to approve the ordinance and Lynn seconded it. I'll go ahead and read it for the short one. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two. An ordinance to approve the solid waste collection rate for twenty twenty-four for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine. Approving a five-year contract for solid waste collection in Holiday Island. And whereas the contract includes the rate structure with provisions for periodically adjusting those rates based on the consumer price index. And whereas Carroll County Solid Waste has notified the city of an intended rate increase of seven percent effective four one twenty twenty-four on the anniversary of the contract. Now therefore being ordained by the city council, the city of Holiday Island, that the attached rates are approved for, uh, the year beginning four one twenty-four and ending three thirty-one twenty-five, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of January twenty-third nineteen.
First reading, right?
First reading.
So it's not passed yet?
Well.
Whatever.
You have to pass the first time.
It has to pass the first reading. Is there, uh, any discussion on the ordinance? I can start off by saying I did at the, in the twenty-fifth hour, uh, email everybody the CPI index that, that Carroll County Solid Waste uses. Um, basically, all this does is say that we're going by the contract.
I looked, I looked everywhere on Google I could find, and the only number I could find was that nationally, the CPI increased by three point four percent in twenty twenty-three and three point seven percent in Arkansas. I could not find this table that you sent us.
Well.
That's because you weren't looking for the CPI for all urban, uh, uh, custom consumers. It's titled garbage and trash collection U.S. city average. I couldn't find it either. And I, I looked through the, uh, contract we had before. I know, recall it was named, I couldn't find it recently or quickly, so.
Twenty twenty-two went up seven percent. But for twenty twenty-three, it didn't go up seven percent.
Oh.
So I don't know where. And there's seven percent must be an average of the, of the year. I didn't go through those numbers to add them up, but it looks like about seven percent if you look at twelve months.
Well, wouldn't it being? Well, that was a time particular mind to compare to that. On your previous.
This, 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 this index is, is designed by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. With the governmental report, it was issued on November twenty-first. And it has some, it started with an urban consumer CPI dash U, whatever that means. And then it has this title, a series, a seasonality, a survey name, and the data type. So it's a specialized CPI that trash, garbage and trash collection is under. So this is what Carroll County Solid Waste is using. And the only discrepancy I might have found was I didn't add up this and do a division to see if it's seven percent. But from January to here, that's the seven, that's like half a point that's back there. Little over, little over, and that's much over, then down six and a half, so it might average seven. It, the concern I have is the bills we're getting, the January bill for Carroll County Solid Waste says there's going to be increase Jan- or February first.
Yeah, I called.
What was that all about?
I called them and, and they said that was a mistake.
Okay, right. So this increase won't happen till April.
Right.
Okay. And so this index is used to help them recover their lost expenses because of inflation for the prior year.
Yeah.
So.
And, and it, it makes sense that the, the, the CPI for a very specialized uh, activity like driving garbage trucks hundred miles a day would be different from the general consumer price index, which takes into consideration the price of eggs and everything else. So this is heavily weighted towards fuel and, uh, and labor probably.
And I did note, well, the only other thing that I had for concern or question, this is a CPI for that business. They charged us a surcharge for fuel and it was high, but those costs would have been built into the CPI. Their higher fuel. But we were charged a surcharge because it's over a certain amount. Our last bill on my eighteen dollars a month was minus four cents. So their fuel percentage calculation is lower than their baseline. So it's coming down for their fuel. But that fuel they paid would have been built into the CPI, even though we were charged a sur- surcharge also.
Yeah.
So to me, it's a little bit of doubling up to whatever amount that amounts to.
Yeah, fifty cents a month.
Whatever it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless that's. Excludes fuel.
I don't think so, because it's, you know, some, it, it's under this category of collection. And city and, you know.
I would, you'd have to talk to their. You know, there are various CPIs that exclude certain things.
Right. And this one is a, you know, a CPI for urban and then its type is garbage and trash collection.
Yeah.
So.
Check it down to their.
They're, they're double dipping.
I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but.
Uh, but they, if they're targeting as a surcharge and then they adjust to get back what, to get fuel raised during the year, that's a double dip.
So, Dan, uh, you sit on the board of the Carroll County Solid Waste Authority. Do they vote, does the board vote on the, uh, amount of increase to the post?
They, the board approves the range structure for each city and the county.
I think they have to, like. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is they ought to drop that surcharge, that's just a big pain, because you never know what your bill is gonna be, and you. If you, and you got an automatic debit, so every, every month you gotta go back and change the damn thing.
I guess, Ken, I don't know if I agree with your statement. In that the fee that we are paying right now is based on the CPI a year ago. And that fuel adjustment may just be reflecting the change in the cost of fuel from one year ago.
Uh, it's based.
Right.
They changed it, they changed it every month.
Mm-hmm. It would have been, it's, they set a rate whenever we started, and then they charged a fuel charge when it got higher than that. But that higher time happened in twenty three. Right, and so in twenty four.
But not in January.
And it, and it changes every month.
That rate is based on January then.
Okay.
And their fuel adjustment, obviously, is reflecting. The change in the fuel costs possibly since that time.
Right.
Because as you said, right now it is, it was a credit, probably because fuel costs are way down.
They're below their set point.
Right.
But anyway.
That's not double dipping.
Yeah.
That's reflecting our current costs.
It'll be, they charged, in the pure math, they charged a surcharge for their fleet pot more. This year, we're gonna pay more because their fuel costs more.
Right, but then that'll, that'll reset the starting point for fuel costs.
Okay, what you say. Okay. It, it's a minor amount, but you know, to me, it's a, it's.
It's, it's just an.
It's bad, yeah.
The, the sur, surcharge is, if you got, if you got an automatic debit set up.
Utilities do that all the time, Carroll Electric is doing it on your electric bill.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't have a contract with Carroll Electric, we have a contract with these folks.
But it's based on the change since they set their rate.
Well, and there's also a paragraph or two in that contract that says they can change the rates based on their expense exposure. So, you know, I can understand it, if all of a sudden they lost half their fleet for some reason. You know, they're doing an increased expense, but that fuel thing was just in my, my issues. Paid extra during the month because the cost of the gas went up. Well, during the month of, of the whole year, the gas was high, now we're gonna pay for what the gas prices were in this year, in twenty four. It's raised their rates.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We're gonna raise it at seven percent because of this average. Because of fuel costs.
But then your fuel cost goes down.
Well, that'll be in twenty five.
But they're buying fuel cheaper right now.
We're, we're burning a lot of clock here, talking literally pennies.
Anyway, alright.
Literally pennies.
Good, so it's easy to take off next year.
And if you can't handle it.
I can handle it.
I'll uh, yeah, I'll give you a dollar every month.
Okay.
Cover my surcharge.
Garbage bill.
It was just.
Any other discussion on the ordinance? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Coon.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, passed on the first reading, we'll take it up again in the next meeting. All right, um. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero zero one. Authorizing an A and P tax ad hoc exploratory committee. I've got enough adjectives in it.
Yeah.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero zero one. Resolution authorizing an advertising and promotion ad hoc exploratory committee for the city of Holiday Island. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number two thousand twenty four dash zero zero one.
Lynn, Linda made a motion, do I have a second?
A second, Bill.
Ken seconded it, I'll read the resolution. Whereas advertising and promotion of the city of Holiday Island is critical to the economic development of the community, and. Whereas information was needed relative to potential sources of and uses of revenue for advertising and promotion. And whereas the city council for the city of Holiday Island has determined. That a committee comprised of members of the business community and government would be best qualified to provide that information. And whereas any action taken by the city relative to advertising and promotion will be better received by the community. If the action is based on community input. Now be it resolved by the city council of Holiday Island. That an ad hoc committee titled the Holiday Island Committee to Study Advertising and Promotion is authorized. The members shall be appointed by the mayor and be comprised of resident representatives. From the Chamber of Commerce, the city council, the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District. The Holiday Island Business Community and the community at large. The responsibilities of the committee will be restricted and stoked. For determining potential sources of revenue for advertising and promotion and estimate an annual revenue. An estimate on annual revenue potential and the most beneficial uses of the A and P revenue. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of January twenty third, twenty twenty four. So any discussion?
No.
It's just a note that when this committee is formed. Isn't, isn't, isn't considered a public meeting, so we have to publish and make it openly public?
Yep.
And recordings have to be made.
Yep.
Okay.
When, when it says Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, we have a member, is that a member of the Board of Commissioners or a member of the staff?
Whoever they want to represent them.
Who is that?
They.
The board. The board will decide.
I, I should look at us.
I just wanna clarify that we're going, the board will vote on the.
Or, or because they're not supposed to be involved in the day-to-day, is the district manager's job? I don't wanna get into it.